This time I'll call the Budget Committee Work Session to order and ask for roll call vote, or roll call please.
Cole. Hanum. Lewis. Mitchell. Moon. We have a quorum.
Now I ask for emergency announcement, please.
Before we get started, let me read the emergency evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm will sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you've reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles.
I'll now ask if there's any input on items on the agenda. Yes, sir. Come on up, Commissioner Crowe.
I'm Dodd Crowe. Just right up here, sorry. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'd like to make sure that the split out of the proposal by school board makes it only through many of the counties. It's a one count.
Will you turn this mic on, please?
Oh, did I get to start over? Because what I got to say is really important and... Okay. My name's Dodd Crowe, and I'm here to talk about the item that the school board has put on the budget. And I want to make sure that gets to the entree so we all can look at it. Better slow down. Each week I come and I hear us reminded that 90 percent of Blount County's debt is from schools. I believe that. Which means 90 million dollars of that belongs to the city, but it's never mentioned. They're enjoying Jumbotron's, Christmas, but in July, one-to-one computers. But their problem goes deeper than that. The problem is much bigger for Blount County government. First, let me understand. Let me say I understand. The difference between city and county residence is an imaginary line. Okay, we're all real people. But when people take control of drawing that imaginary line, it makes a big difference. Over time, our city has aggressively managed these imaginary lines. They have maximized city revenue and minimized city expenditures, which is good business for the city, but bad business for the county. For example, have you ever noticed how the cities have annexed the roads and the businesses, but not the residents? This is maximizing revenue because they get the county's half of local sales tax, and then they split the other half. They minimize expenditures by only taking in residents with property values that are high enough to justify the expenditures of the city. This is called cherry picking. If you don't believe me, please go and look at Blount GIS, and it will show you how they draw their boundaries. I'm a commissioner, and you are planners for the people outside the imaginary line. These are the people who have lost 18 policemen due to insufficient pay. These are people whose children are funded $600 below the Tennessee average. These are people who don't have enough money to keep up their infrastructure. These are the people who live across from the imaginary line of the people who pay above average. Their students are funded way above average, and they have lots of support for their infrastructure. So, I beg you to reclaim some revenue. It's smart business. It's a move towards equity. Blount County cannot afford to keep borrowing money so the cities can have extras. And fourth, our citizens deserve it. So please reclaim some revenue. Didn't want to start a war, but I tell you, it's legal. Ethical, I think, looking at the past history of Blount County, it's extremely ethical. If you don't believe it, look at Blount GIS. Go to the map, decide for yourself. Thank you for your time.
Does anyone else have input on items on the agenda? Seen none, we'll move on to discussion of the 1516 budget. Randy?
Thank you, Mayor. You pull that up, Taylor, so I can see it on the screen, such as it is. I apologize for this print being so small, but we're somewhat limited by screen size, so I apologize for that. Just to recap what we did last week, we gave you an overview by summary, by fund of the county's larger operating funds. And then we talked about some of the issues that we were facing, such as maintenance of effort for five different entities and county government. We talked about compensation and benefit challenges, being our class compensation study with Evergreen, condition of our health fund, and then the anomaly that takes place creating the way the year falls, two extra workdays for next fiscal year. This is going to be hard for me to see. Right now, we have, based on what you saw last week, we've got two changes to this spreadsheet for... Should be the increase in the deficit that we have right now for the general fund you'll see in red in the upper right-hand corner. This is page five. Page numbers are in the lower right-hand corner. You'll see in red $6,965,000 and change. And that number changed from last week because we've received our update from all the appeals that the different office holders and department heads submitted to Evergreen. And, let's go to that next one. Go to page seven. It should be a little clearer. No, wrong page, sorry. On page nine. There are two numbers that change here. One is for juvenile court, and that's count 53500, fourth line at the top of the page. Under the column called Evergreen Difference, that number changed to $13,444. I don't know if you in the audience can see it, but shaded in green. And that reflects the changes in the magistrate position in juvenile court. That's a $3,997 change. Then the other change is down the page on sheriff. You'll see that number is now $1,511,811. That number changes by $137,694, and that reflects changes in between two pay grades for sergeants and lieutenants. And if you've got questions about that, Jenny's here to address any specific questions. So, the cost, including benefits, for Evergreen at the bottom of that page is $2,51,830. And that constitutes all the appeals that Evergreen has considered and their recommendation. All appeals were not granted, just those that maintain the integrity of the system they're proposing, the plan they're proposing, and that's the cost associated with that, that $2,51,830. All right, let's go back. There were no changes in our revenue projections on page six. And you'll see in red, we're projecting need of $6,965,000 to balance the general county. That would include Evergreen. And if that were approved, we would be looking at submitting a budget of $47,677,000 to the full commission. All right, on page 10, we gave you this list of, this is the predominant number of additional requests that we showed you last week. We were asked to bring these back and have them associated with what the cost would be if any of those were to be approved for recommendation to the full commission, what it would cost to do those in terms of pennies on the tax rate. And we'll have that a little bit later. The other thing that you need to be aware of on page 12, we showed you a proposed budget as recommended by the Blount County School Board. And that was a revenue scenario of $84,700,000 and a proposed appropriation of $86,404, constituting a difference, or a need for additional funding of $1,704. You were made aware at last week's meeting that we'd received updated BEP numbers. Next page 13, right now, based on the information that the school system has provided us, this has not changed because the board has not acted on this. That will be done. If you go to the bottom of the page on the left-hand side under revenues, you'll see revenue changes are pending board approval on May 7, and that would be a decrease in revenues of $450,000 at this time. So that means that they would, if adopted, they would have a revenue of $84,250,000. And then on the right-hand side, which is the appropriation or expense side, the request for appropriation would increase from $1,704 to $2,154, if that were to be the only change that the school board were to act on. Any questions or comments on that? All right, on page 14. This is just a summary of all the budgets by fund. And you'll see that we still, the next item we'll talk about is debt service, and that's $1,767,000 we need to balance that fund. You'll see the detail, that has not changed on page 15 from last week. And just as a reminder, had this body not approved any refinancing, we would have seen a need for an additional $645,000 in the debt service fund, whether we did a refinancing or not. That's the way the amortization schedule fell. However, with the refinancing, well, that's an additional $1.1 million and change that we need, so the sum of those two numbers is the $1,767,000. And again, as a refresher, what we accomplished with that refinancing is the 16 years that remained on that financing and the balloon principal payments in 2030 and 2031, those have now been accelerated, and we're now making principal payments on that debt every year. And we didn't extend the term. The other thing you did is you lessened the county's risk for those who have no appetite or tolerance for derivative products. We've eliminated that at a cost of over $7 million. And it did constitute us actually increasing the county's debt for the refinancing primarily because of the $7 million to pay off the swap. And then, to refresh you on my comments last week, and Mr. Davis did accurately portray it, you don't really have a choice on this one as far as I'm concerned. We have told the public, and we've told the buyers of our debt, that we're pledging the full faith and credit of the county. That's why they call it general obligation debt. So this is one thing that we have to fund, in my opinion. And if we don't, there's a good likelihood we'll never be able to offer any debt in the public market. All right, then the next item on page 16 that's highlighted in red is the condition of our health insurance fund. You'll see in red that we're showing $3,169,558 that we're out of balance in that fund. And then the detail of how we arrived at that is on page 17. Top of the page is the revenue that we're forecasting of $18,121,000, and then the expenses that we're forecasting for next year at $21,291,000. And then you ask us to come back and show you what it would look like if we were to balance it. The bottom of the page doesn't change any at all. At the top of the page, we're limited as to what we can recommend there. And in that upper right-hand box, you'll see that on self-insurance premiums and other employment benefits, we are plugging in the difference on the employer's side. The broker told the HR and insurance committee that you cannot change a benefit plan design, nor can you change your premium structure without 60 days' public notice, and then you, in essence, have to conduct another open enrollment process for all your employees. Well, typically, we would be doing that in the fall anyway, so I don't think it's very practical to try to do that in advance of a normal open enrollment process in the fall. So given those options, the employer was the only side, only place I knew to plug in that difference for the time being. We can't make decisions on behalf of the HR and insurance committee. They will meet on the 19th, and this will be an item of discussion that they will have at that time. And then, question was, how would the cost break down on the health fund? So you can see, if you're trying to address the shortfall, how would it be allocated on a source basis? So, 30, a little over 30 percent, or a little under $1 million, $956,000 is attributed to General County Fund 101. And then the schools are the majority, almost 66 percent, a little over $2 million, and that's all the school operating funds, or General Purpose Fund 141, 142, 143, and 146. Then 2 and 3/4 percent is attributed to the Highway Department, or about $87,000. And then the library is attributed to about a million, 1.24 percent, or about $39,000. And that's the sum by fund of how the employees would be allocated that make up the health fund. And then these were the rates on the insurance that are in effect at this time on page 20. And then you asked us some questions last week to bring back some information to you. So, question was, when was the last time the general fund balance was at 7.4 million that we're projecting at the end of this fiscal year? And you can see, these are out of our audits from 2014 all the way back to 2004. And you can see that the last time it approached 7.4 million was in 2011, and that was 7.9 million. And of that 7.9, 5.4 of it was unassigned fund balance. The next question was, how much of the current general fund balance of a little under $10.5 million is unrestricted? The answer, that's 7.526 million. And then where will the unrestricted portion of the estimated fund balance on June 30 this year be? And we're estimating it to be 4.468 million. Then we were asked, how many counties use the property tax to fund school capital? And here are three years, and this source is CTASS. It's not meant to be all-inclusive of all counties because CTASS only pulls information from those counties that are audited by the comptroller's office. So Bradley, Madison, Roan, and Rutherford Counties, we know are four counties that for at least three years have been utilizing property tax rate to fund school capital needs. We also know McMinn County does that and has been doing it for a long time because they told me that, and that's the basis for the lawsuit that we've referenced back in December. So, on page 26, in summary, we're short $6,965,000 in the general county fund, and then we have an additional $2.488 million in supplemental requests. So our total sources to meet all the requests and needs that have been shared with you by different presentations are $9.5 million. We're short $1,707,000 in the school budget, based on what the recommendation of the Blount County School Board is. Then the debt service fund needs $1,767,000, so we're short in aggregate almost $13 million. And that assumes we shift 7 cents of the property tax rate for education capital, because that was part of the school board's recommendation. And then when you address the funding for the shortfall in the health fund, that's an additional 3.1, almost 3.17, or a total of $16,151,000. All right, the other request that you ask is to equate these in pennies. So if you include the library, which their funding is from three sources, the library's funded at a rate of 50 percent from Blount County, 40 percent from Maryville, and 10 percent from Alcoa, but Blount County accounts for the entire operation of the library. They're our employees, whether we have funding from the other entities or not. So if you include the library's portion of Evergreen, then we would need to come up with $7,227,600, which equates to 23 cents on the property tax rate for general county. The shaded items, which would include the recovery court, the funding for the IDB, the Parks and Rec, the increased funding for the advertising we need to do for public hearings on the beer board, those items would total up $356,355, and that's approximately 2 cents, because we don't do pennies and fractions. And then the debt service is an additional 6 cents. So those three items total up 31 cents. And if you look at the health fund and how you split dollars, or split pennies, to address Blount County schools' issues related to funding their needs, it would take an additional 4 cents on general county to fund those obligations of the healthcare fund, and take an additional 11 cents for the school system to fund their portion. And then if you looked at what the cost of the other supplemental funding requests are, it'd take 7 cents to fund all those related to the general county, and additional 9 cents for the school system. So the total, if you funded all that $16 million, it'd take 62 cents. And if you fund everything, so the first 3 are 31 cents, the healthcare's another 15, and the supplemental requests are another 16. The 46 cents relates to items 1, 2, 3, and 4. So then we go to page 28, and different ones of you have asked me, and in aggregate, you asked me last week to bring these back as a, and correlate them to what it would cost on pennies on the tax rate. So if you funded all these, that's 6 cents. And then this is just, the page 29 is just another way of showing you some of the stuff that you asked for. The shaded items are the two case managers and part-time staff for the recovery court, Parks and Recreation I mentioned earlier, the IDB, and then the contributions to agency, which is the maintenance agreement on the Heritage Center property and then the beer board. So those... Those are the items that I'm aware of, that each of you have indicated you're willing to support. All right, the other information I was asked to provide you in response to my comment that we have no elasticity in our revenue base, that we are totally dependent on property tax in the general county and the fees generated by our fee offices, I was asked if I could pull the data to see what the situation is statewide, and then what a wheel tax scenario would look like. So I'm going to actually do this in reverse. I'm going to go to page 31 first. There are 60 counties out of 95 counties in the state that have a wheel tax. Their rates range from $10 to $90. 35 of the 60 counties have rates that are $40 or higher. It can be leveled on any motor vehicle that's taxable by the state. You may have different rates depending on different vehicles, but it must be rationally determined. In other words, you have to do it by classification of vehicle. Some single out motorcycles at a different rate, some will actually single out dual-axle vehicles for a higher rate. And everything must be done on the same terms, same collection method, prorated on the same basis, and the grace period that you would have for your registration fee on your vehicle. Because most of them collected, the counties collected at the time you renew your tags on your car. All right, we can go back to previous pages. So if you look, and we've taken out the vehicles that we, that the clerk's office currently receives registration on, that are actually in other counties, but they choose to register them here because there is no wheel tax. So we've taken those 20,000 vehicles out, and 157,000 is the number that we'll use for this analysis. So if you assumed a $30 wheel tax, 35, 40, 45, $50 wheel tax, you'll see the gross revenue that we've estimated could be derived from that. And then we've got an adjustment over there because there may be exceptions. There are some counties that accept out based on veteran status, some that exempt out based on age. They discount them based on those factors. So we just put a 10 percent adjustment in there to come down with what we thought was a reasonable number that you could anticipate collecting in the event that the wheel tax were enacted. And that's really all I've got. This is everything that you've asked me to prepare for you based on last week's meeting. Next week, when we meet, you'll be asked to go down a recommendation that will go to the full commission, that would be included in the commission's packet on the, for their regular meeting, not to be acted on at that regular meeting. That's what starts the public process. We would run publication notice at that time, and then that's what kicks off the whole deliberation process between the public and the full commission. And that also is in keeping with our calendar that the commission... And that also is in keeping with our calendar that the commission has adopted. Any questions or comments?
Randy, I got one question, and I don't know if you have the answer or not, but the 20,000 vehicles that we are currently issuing tags for, for other counties or rental companies, what kind of impact to the revenue is that if we don't do those?
I was not able to get that information, but I think we'll be covered by just reducing it by that amount of money, taking that many vehicles off of it. We also don't know, and in fairness to the clerk's office, they didn't have time to put this together for me, but we would need, if commission were to enact something like this, and obviously there would be some additional costs. You've got the printing costs of the actual decals, there'd be two decals that we would put on vehicles. But I can tell you this, I mean, based on the discussion that we had last week, I've had probably a handful of people mention to me they didn't realize we didn't have any other revenue choices in our general fund other than property tax. I think in fairness, it's easy to focus on deficits like we're looking at now, but the other side of the equation is there's somebody out there in this county that is expecting some level of service for what they're paying for. And that's going to change depending on who you talk to. So just keep in mind, it's not something you're trying to impose on the public. The other side of the public conversation is there are people out there requesting, in some instances, demanding services. We're all the time hearing about we're putting too much on people. Well, there's sometimes peoples out there asking for it because there's a need for it.
I have one more, I guess, question or comment. On the shaded areas, one item that isn't in there that I think we need to think about is the collections person that was asked for from Mr. Hatcher. During the budget hearing, he felt that he could recover the person's salary, maybe even multiple times that person's salary. So I think, to me, it makes sense if we can increase the revenue more than what we're going to pay a person to do, we should at least look at it.
I don't think that's unreasonable. However, I will say this, that argument will be just as valid after we adopt the budget as it is right now. And you have a tendency to get those things lumped in, and you lose sight of the significance of them. So if you're addressing it on a single item basis, I think people might understand it a little better than if we just throw it in here in the mix.
Randy, even, I guess I want to make sure I'm clear, we're about $19.5 million shy based on a 62-cent property tax increase. With, is that accurate?
Well, 62 cents would fund 16.152 million. I'm looking at page 27.
So that would be the deficit?
Yes, that's the deficit and the supplemental requests.
Okay. And I'm, yeah, I'm just looking at the total.
The 46 cents in the green on the bottom right-hand corner would fund everything down to the seven and nine cents. So the sum of 23, 2, 6, 4, and 11 cents is 46 cents. All the green.
Does that show up? It shows up a little bit. Okay, thank you.
And as a reminder, the certified rate, we have to publish, the certified property tax rate, we'll have to publish that. And the cents, if we, if you are considering any recommendation that raises one penny more than the $2,017.7, then we have to publicly notice that and that we have the intent of proposing a property tax rate greater than the certified rate. And I would like to get some indication, if that's where we're heading, without mentioning an amount, if it's one penny more, then I can run the same public notice. I think when we publish the budget separately specify in the notice, and we can discuss it at the public hearing as two separate items. You could discuss, at least that's the preliminary reading I've gotten from our attorney, we have to discuss the certified rate and then the intent to increase it. That's two separate conversations. And then you have the appropriation side of what that tax rate that this body recommends would fund. So that'd be kind of the three points of discussion at the public hearing. Just, just look, Mr. Chairman, just looking at debt, something that isn't an option not to pay, that will, that will definitely put us over by one penny or a fraction thereof. And I know this is a work session, we can't take action, but I believe it'd be more than obvious that our intent would be to have a tax rate in excess of the certified, just by account 151 debt. I don't know what the other members.
I would certainly concur with Commissioner Moon. I don't, it'd be hard, it's hard to look at these figures and figure out any other way to be able to address this issue without some increase over and above the certified
Any other questions?
Randy, just wanted, even with, even with an option of a wheel tax at the maximum figure on here of $50, you would still only cut the deficit amount in half with that, with that wheel tax. Is that accurate?
That's, that's fair. You would take $7 million off. My proposal would be, if you were going to consider something like this, dedicating all that money to the debt service fund would make the most sense. When you consider that over 90% of our debt is education-related, and this would be a county-wide user fee that would be assessed if it were to be enacted, you could certainly make a logical argument that everyone would be contributing for the same purpose.
Yeah, a single purpose, whatever that purpose may be. So we go from 14.5, if you consider a wheel tax, down to probably 7.5, 7.5 million dollars. So then you've got to address that issue.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We had a referendum on the wheel tax that's voted down 4 to 1 by the voter. I see it would be a stretch of everyone's imagination to believe that the commission would vote 14 votes in two consecutive regular meetings for wheel tax. I appreciate the information, the analysis that took place, the counties that have it versus the counties that don't. There's really no appetite for a wheel tax in Blount County. As a property owner, it's painful. It's the only other source we have other than sales tax. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other discussion? Any other questions? Yes?
Just to clarify what I heard from Mr. Moon, sales tax isn't an option though right now. We're already at max amount you can do with sales tax, is my understanding is that?
That's correct, where the county is at the max law by state law.
And I guess the only other consideration is, as we talk more about this and more information gets in the paper to the public, the other, I guess, side of that coin that Commissioner Moon was talking about is the fact that it really is an option at this point. You can, each voter will have to assess that as a property owner, what their preference would be as we look at this deficit, whether that's 46 cents on their property or whether it's a $50 wheel tax on their vehicle. And if you run the numbers, it may very well be that the less expensive way for a property owner to come out would be on a wheel tax and a smaller property tax as opposed to taking the full brunt of that on their property at 46 cents. So it's, it's an argument both ways. It's, it's something that we'll have to analyze as we go, but I would urge everybody to kind of look at both sides of that issue as everybody will have a different opinion. Thank you.
On page 33, the needed balance to fund 101, including Evergreen, do we know what that minimum amount would be if we only fund up to the maintenance of effort in the 101 I know every department or account doesn't have the maintenance of effort, but...
Well, the sheriff's department would be in the general fund. The library and elections, elections directly is funded from here, and the library is indirectly funded here. We have to show the gross here, at least on the, the portion that's attributed to the county share, at least. So those three for sure would be impacted by the county maintenance of effort. Schools obviously are funded elsewhere, and highway's funded, and it's on fund. And I think just for everybody's own benefit, when you talk about going back to, you know, last year's funding level, or two years ago, or pick a year, maintenance of effort becomes an issue when you talk about reverting back to prior year funding levels, just for everybody to understand. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could, could you go step through that in a little more detail, Mr. Vineyard? You say we revert back to a previous funding year. What's, what's the options if we reverted back and an office holder had an issue? An office holder has obligations to carry out, and I'm talking in broad terms, but they have obligations under state law to carry out their responsibilities. If, if they deemed that something that the commission adopted would restrict them in carrying out their duties as required by state law, their remedy is to go to court. So instead of responding to what an office holder asks you to consider in funding, you would be responding to what a judge told you to do. That's the primary difference. So that's an oversimplification, Joel. Each of them have their own criteria, but in essence, because county governments are agents of the state, and they, each of those office holders have responsibilities to be carried out on behalf of the state and the counties they represent. I don't want to speak out of term for office holders. Let me say one other thing just as a reminder. This is not anything that happened overnight. This has been in the process for two years. As I stated last week, anytime we defer making decisions, there tends to be a compounding effect of that decision. If it's a dollar today that we put off to tomorrow, it's a dollar and a nickel, or a dollar and a dime, or a dollar and something. We have used fund balance in the General County for two years to balance our budget. One last comment, and I'll shut up. If you want between now and probably Tuesday, well, Wednesday at the latest, give me some indication of, you know, if you've got any other questions or anything, I'll be happy to try to address that. But at our meeting on Monday, and I've got to have something in the packet by, right now, I would basically put this, this packet will be online tomorrow anyway, but we'll need something in there for... but we'll need something in there for consideration on Monday. I would hope we'd have a motion and a second to get something on the floor, whether that's one of these spreadsheets or not, and then you all could make changes to that as you see fit. And I think at least that would be an orderly start unless somebody's got a better idea. That's all my remarks. Mr. Vineyard, how do you propose that we handle the count one seventy-seven? If, if we look at shifting pennies in presentation of the tax rate resolution, do you have a recommendation? Well, we've been provided what the school board's recommendation is, and you can act on the total, or you can act in part on it. But as we set forth, we'd have an overall tax rate, a certain amount to general county one oh one, a certain amount to one forty-one, a certain amount to one fifty-one. And then following all the other sundry items, beer tax, wholesale, different taxes that are fairly de minimis compared to the property tax. Should then, account one forty-one would carry, it's one oh seven currently, so we'd be looking at one dollar. And then in the, in the text to follow, like wholesale beer tax and so forth, setting forth at seven cents would be set aside in, in, in account one seventy-seven. Or would we take care of that in the appropriations resolution? I think it's, my thought was I'd bring two resolutions to you just as starting points, and then you can amend it or do whatever. Just so you have a point of reference to start from. I don't want to lose sight of what the body's doing as we make motions. So as much as we can nail down to start with, and the fewer moving pieces we have, the less confusion I think we'll have. I think you see my point of view. Yes. Is there any other questions or any more discussion? You have anything else, Randy? Hearing no more discussion and no more questions, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.